This is the regular board meeting for Monday, October 25th. I'd like to welcome everybody here. We'll go ahead and do a quick roll call of board members and then we'll go on with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Eddie Van Amme here.
Sarah Hughes here.
Roger Canoy here.
Jeremy Mask here.
Cindy Cassidy here.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, everybody should have received the agenda. We will have a discussion and/or entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'd second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. And I will go ahead and take a moment to review the I-35 mission statement and district priorities. Our mission statement reads, "The Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society." District priorities? A, articulate and support a cohesive, student-centered pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement. B, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century. And C, operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. That puts us right into our education spotlight.
So we have two coaches here, the Stephanies. Dr. Stephanie Brown and Stephanie Good, who are instructional coaches this year. And over the last two months have completed some cognitive coaching training and some student-centered coaching. So teacher leadership was developed about five, six years ago with an allocation from the state. It's a categorical fund that allows high-quality, highly-trained teachers to move out of the classroom and to move into a whole bunch of other classrooms. So they actually coach peers, so other teachers. So we have focused on student-centered coaching and cognitive coaching the last couple of years. So I wanted them to come and give you an overview of what that was and you can ask them questions if you have any.
Alright, so we're passing out some materials. The first two that you're getting are our collective learning corner. Those are monthly newsletters that we have started for this school year. Stephanie Brown has been the mastermind behind those. But just keeping the staff aware of what we're doing, what's going on, and what's available for them for coaching. There's a couple of other items coming around and I'll have Stephanie share those.
One is an upcoming PD and a pumpkin. And so we are going to hand those out later this week. It's a little hack card. So we are, we put together a little topic about coaching in this little PD flyer. And so we would... Can you hear me now? Okay. Okay. So we put together a PD and a pumpkin for this month, where we're going to hand out like a little sack and it'll go with the sack and the little candies and stuff in it. But the topic is all about coaching and the opportunities that you can have for coaching. And so that leads us into what we've been learning for the last month and a half, really. We've been to cognitive coaching and we've been to student-centered coaching. And so one of the documents is an example of how we've combined the two together. But there are a lot of opportunities. Student-centered coaching is focusing on what the teachers want the students to do in their classrooms and what they want to see from their students based on standards, student work, and evidence pieces. And cognitive coaching led us into a bunch of different ways that we can do just a planning session, a data collection, or a reflection session, or you can do the whole coaching cycle as a part of a coaching opportunity. And so with those, they also guided us in how to ask good questions, how to paraphrase, how to listen, how to respond, and just truly work with the teachers to help them with their goals and what they want to achieve.
And I think we're really working to combine the two types of coaching, both cognitive coaching and student-centered coaching, because we do have a lot of varying needs in the district right now. And with student-centered coaching, you're really focusing on that student data and what it says and improvements that can be made to improve that student data. And cognitive coaching really lends itself to maybe focus on some other things that our teacher needs in the classroom. So we're really working on combining those to meet all the needs in the district.
I was just going to ask, I mean, I haven't been able to read through it quickly, but what's been the reaction to the newsletter that you've been, you know, how are the teachers responding to that, I guess?
Well, we've only sent out the one, the October one's going out this week. And we've had a little feedback from teachers, but not a lot yet.
In the second one, we're really trying to emphasize the work that we are doing with the teachers in combination with the kinds of coaching that we have. So you'll see, I think there's three snippets from specific teachers that talk about how coaching has benefited them. And we hope to keep embracing that aspect as well as how our teachers are using coaching to their advantage.
Are you collecting any data on the coaching interactions you're having with teachers? So you can kind of trend that, whether it be semester, semester, or year to year, on how those interactions are going up or down based on the teaching levels we have?
We have talked about a survey, either trimesters, quarterly, something to collect the information of what kinds of coaching we're doing and how we have hit sort of our leadership standards. We just haven't fully developed that yet, but it is on our plate that we want to do something to collect that feedback. Individually, we all have our own logs of things that we've done with the teachers, but collectively, we haven't created that yet.
So could you give me just a recap of how, you know, I think the TLC program started, like Sharon said, five years ago. How has it really morphed? Because it seems like it was really a concept and now it's developed. And then, and the second thing is, these are great because it gets the value out to the teachers, right? You almost, this is your sales pamphlet, right? Is there a database in what you capture these examples? So that for future, you know, maybe that's step, next step, so that teachers can find that repository of information and somewhat search if they have a specific problem?
We're actually working on creating a shared drive where a whole bunch of resources are going to be available for teachers. And we'll also have the documents that we're going to use when we're coaching with teachers. I can also say that in the years, coaching is definitely growing in the district. And the survey that we, we gave a survey in our initial PD at the beginning of the school year and three-quarters of our teachers were interested in a coaching cycle. So I think that says a lot about how they value coaching in the district.
Thanks.
Is there any other questions?
I was involved in the initial phase of putting together the, this program years back. And I don't have a question, it's just that, just making comment that how much it's evolved. It's incredible to see the advances made and that the opportunities that are presented to our staff. And it's just different directions, whether you want to stick to straight teaching or do you want to stick to instructional coaching. So I think it's been fantastic to have that opportunity available. And you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now we'll go into the open forum. Residents, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees or students or their performance. We have two people who've signed up to speak and we'll start with Nathan Gibson.
Good afternoon, everybody. Stephanie, thank you, both Stephanies, thank you for your good work. That's awesome. So, one of the things I wanted to talk to you guys about, now that we've kind of this mask thing for a little bit. Eddie, you had brought up some questions, I think it was about four meetings ago. Sharon, you had presented about social emotional learning. And Eddie, you started off asking some really good questions, but we had a lot of other hot topics we were juggling at that time, if you guys remember back. And I think, I think we need to readdress that and probably have a little bit more open conversation and dialogue about what exactly is being taught through the social and emotional learning. And the reason why is because, not saying it's happening here, but in many other districts, mainly inter-school districts, that's being used as kind of a front for the critical race theory training. They're finding ways to get through gray areas in the law. And I just want to make sure that that is not occurring here. The other thing is, there seems to be some, I don't know, misunderstanding on whether or not that's required. I think you stated at the time that's required by the state, but when we talk with our own senator here for this district, who actually happens to be the senate of the education committee, or the chair of the senate education committee, and online, it states it's not actually required for that, you know, to be put in place. So could you, you know, give us a little bit more information on, did we actually hire somebody now that's in the school full-time doing that social and emotional learning? Or at least part-time with some of the funding, if I remember correctly? I don't know, can, and again, I'll go back to my statement before. You're prohibited from speaking about specific things. That infers this can be a two-way dialogue. If I'm mistaken on that, please let me know. But do we have somebody that is actually in the school that's doing the social emotional learning aspect of things?
We have our guidance counselors.
Oh.
So they actually kind of structure the guidance curriculum and it fits into that. We also have advisory time, is that five through 12? Where our teachers have a curriculum. And so the first question you asked is, is the SEL required? The SEL is not, but the standards, some of the standards are. And so that's, that's maybe, I might have misspoke, but what I've been talking about, there are certain standards that we have to teach, not necessarily an SEL curriculum, but we do have standards that we have to teach. We find them in the 21st century. And so that we can get more information on that and have our guidance counselors come and present on what that looks like.
Okay, I think that'd be great. And then, and maybe I misunderstood. I thought at the time you stated there were some federal funds that you were going to acquire or go after, but there had to be a specific, you know, person with a specific curriculum. And maybe I misunderstood that when Eddie was asking those questions.
No, we applied for, with the SR funds, we applied for federal monies that we use for social emotional learning. And so we used it for a day when we took our kids to Wildwood and had some leadership development classes. I think it was optional five through 12 again. If I remember right, we had some sections in fifth grade and sixth grade. And then we had some sections, some different activities for seventh and eighth and then the high school. So those were different days that we had planned. And it came out of what they called a social emotional learning grant, but we used it for our leadership development at Wildwood.
Alright, that's helpful. And it's also much more comforting to know that our teachers that are here in the district are the ones doing this. We didn't get funds to have some outside person come in and teach our kids something. But I think it'd be good if we could get a little bit more information around, you know, what that coursework is, just to bring some comfort to know that, you know, CRT isn't being brought into our school district. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andy Boyce.
I won't take up too much of your time. It's kind of, I was kind of thinking of the same thing and we hadn't coordinated, so we didn't really know what each other was going to talk about. But, you know, I have the same concerns regarding the social emotional learning. There's a lot of the terminology that's being used. I think we are making access of the, is it Second Step website? And if you get in there and start digging, there's a lot of terminology that's kind of really pushing the limits of what CRT is versus SEL. And one of the things we need to be careful about not getting into sexism or racism or the scapegoating of some of that stuff. We need to be careful about that because it can lead to some other issues, not just for what we see for our children, but potentially, unfortunately, against the school. So we kind of need to be careful about that kind of thing. The other thing I wanted to mention was, because things happen across the nation and we see them, as parents here, we see different school boards in different locations. You know, we raise concerns for ourselves. Clearly, we're completely different from a school in California, but I think we need to be tentatively watching the things that are happening so that those things don't seep in. And I'm against vaccine mandates in any form for children. It is happening in California. Governor Newsom is pushing it. If you want to get vaccine, vaccine, fine, that's fine. But don't push it on our children because it could lead to some, maybe families pulling out, which would be financial issues. So just putting that out there as, it's not something I'm interested in dealing with either. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Student representative report.
I don't see Will. I thought he was going to be here, so I apologize.
You haven't received anything, though?
I've not.
Okay, alright. Then we'll move into the principal reports. Looks like Mr. Castor is making his way down.
So I missed last month's meeting. I've got a little bit more this month than what I tend to have in our building report. But I, you guys, I shared this with Sharon just a little bit ago, so I'm guessing she's not shared it back out with you. But on the TV there, and I've thrown it up on the screen, is, are my notes for this month's report. But, computer science. So computer science is a topic that has been talked about for the last three or four years. And it was signed into law in 2020, senate file 274, that laid out the guidelines of implementation for computer science teaching, or education if you will, within the classrooms. That got bumped out about a year due to COVID. And so the timeline is listed down below here, but it just states that at least one high school course will be offered by the start of July 1, 2022. So what that means for us is we have to have a course offering in the course guidebook for when students register for classes this coming spring. Part of the AEA's responsibility or support here is that they put together a class that we could go through and create a scope and sequence of what that looks like for us and implementation district-wide. Because not just, they just don't have the expectation for high school. They have these computer science standards that have been established that we have to implement at both high school, middle school, and elementary. Now, the date for the middle school is July 1 of '23. And same as elementary, it is July 1 of '23. So we've got, we've got an additional year, if we so chose, to wait for that. And so myself and Heather Wells and Priscilla Boswell went through a training, or that support class from the AEA. And we created a potential, again, implementation scope of what this could look like in our district. So I'll also preface with, this looks different in every school district, depending on who they have on staff, depending on who's interested in teaching computer science. We had this conversation among secondary staff last year and there just wasn't the interest in current staff, nor really a great place to put a computer science class. So we pushed pause on that conversation, went through this course with the AEA, and came up with the scope of the consideration of hiring one FTE for this computer science position so that it looks very similar to how our guidance programs look now. They would teach exploratory courses at the elementary. They would do the same at the middle school. And then they would also be able to teach their course at the high school level. So again, we're a year in advance when it comes to middle school and elementary, but obligated by this house file to make sure that that is implemented for this coming spring. So I understand that's something you guys will want to take and talk about more, but I wanted to get that out on the table, that we have, we have this and the framework that goes with it. So if I can provide more of that to Sharon, please let her know and I'll get you, get you everything that we have. But they do provide materials, they provided us materials and guidelines to go through this. And really, really, I think the course was more so designed for those that are going to teach the class. But for our case, we didn't have that person who is going to teach that class yet. So we would want, we would want to help support them go, going through this material again upon potential hire.
So just one comment for the board, as you're thinking about this. This is a class that requires a computer science endorsement. And so if a teacher does not currently have that, we would have to have somebody either get it or hire someone that has it. So it's a very specific endorsement that they'd have to have.
Yes.
So just, so when we talk about recommending an FTE, it's because nobody on our staff currently has it.
Yep.
And nobody on our staff has the time to do that. So I would imagine around January, this will come as an action item, but we wanted to give you a couple of months. So if there was information you needed or wanted, you could have it. But I just wanted to clarify that this is a separate endorsement that the teacher has to have in order to teach it.
Can I ask questions?
Yeah.
So the STEM, STEM teachers are extremely difficult to find. And this one's even more specialized.
Yep.
Can you talk to me about, you know, leveraging DMAC, leveraging other larger districts in the area with the sharing agreement, something like that? I'm sure you guys have thought about it. I'm just kind of curious. Because we're hearing even math teachers, right? You can't, you can't find a math teacher, they're doing it online with a, I mean, it's, it's really rough, so. Love your thoughts.
Yeah, that's certainly something we can entertain when it comes to sharing a teacher. I think that's, that's going to be something more and more, you know, at the forefront of what everybody's doing because of some of these shortages. Our thought for considering a full-time position, at least by this committee, our thinking was, if every state were to go out and hire a computer science person, that pool is probably negative currently anyhow. And so if we waited, if we waited out a year, so if we offered some sort of opportunity through a sharing agreement or through DMAC for this next year, so we were in compliance, would we be that much further behind in '23 when we were ready to try and hire somebody full-time? So the thinking was, if we were out front about trying to do this rather than in the rear, we could potentially find someone. There's a ton of support right now if there are people interested in getting the endorsement or getting that certification. So whether it's the AEA or DMAC even, there's all sorts of opportunity. But finding those individuals that are willing to take that opportunity to get the endorsement is the challenge right now.
And I know a lot of, there's a lot of corporations, like I guess ours, that really encourage the sharing of information and helping out, like. So I'm thinking people in the IT world might, might have an in between a corporate partnership so the corporation gets an ESG kind of signal, a score, raises their score within the corporate standing. They can pay for some. Hopefully, something like that's available too.
Sure, yep.
Other questions?
So, Steve, so I'm just curious, just on a high level, and maybe you don't have this information yet, but just curious. So nine through 12, there has to be a computer science course and then...
One, one course, yes.
One course, yes. And then same for eighth grade on down?
It doesn't specify how it's taught from eighth grade on down. So, and it technically doesn't specify how it's taught in ninth grade, nine through 12. There are standards that have been established that we have to make sure that are in place somewhere. So could you implement computer science in an exploratory class similar to what we do with health and PE or health, PE is a bad example, health and music at the middle school level? That's where we would say whoever this person is, you know, if we were to get, if we were to look at hiring this potentially in January or early February even, we would like to have this, we'd like to onboard this person early so we could go through some course design work and make sure that we have all of those standards hit. So it doesn't indicate whether it needs one class or two classes. You know, the way our exploratories work is we generally offer one section at grades five, six, one grade, or one section at grades seven and eight, and then the exploratories at the high, or the electives at the high school.
So how detailed do you expect this coursework to be? Is it more of sequencing, algorithm, platform, software platform?
I can get you that information. The standards are all available through the Department of Ed, but I'm not familiar enough with computer science terms to tell you what, what that looks like.
Okay. I didn't know if we were emphasizing more on the hardware, software.
When they got into that part, I told Priscilla and Heather, I was like, whoa, whoa. Let's go back to who's going to do this because we've clearly established it's not going to be Steve in the first five minutes of that conversation. So, yeah, but I can get you those standards for you to take a look at.
No, I just thought on a high level, if you knew it off the top.
No, I don't, sorry.
Okay.
So this was a state law, correct?
Yeah, house file, I put this in there, house file 274. And it was signed into law in 2020 is what the, I pulled this little excerpt right from the Department of Ed website just so you could see what it read. And like I said, the dates have adjusted because they were, they were actually a year in advance about this time a year ago. And then they, I think, obviously the challenges of last year presented enough. And so they just said, let's, let's pause here and bump it out a year so that people have a little time to plan for this.
So most school districts are going to be in our same position of having to hire.
Yep.
I'm sure they put in additional funding for schools for this position, right?
I'm going to default that to Sharon, but I see her shaking her head. I knew the answer as well. No, that answer is no. But that's also where I'd say, you know, I've talked to, I talked about this with our conference principals. We met a week ago Monday. They're all in the same boat and they're trying to figure out how it best fits. Some, some districts that are a little smaller than ours are having their business teacher teach it. Well, if your business teacher has zero interest in computer science, how quality is that course going to be for your kids? Some are saying very similar to the conversations we're having. Is there someone we could partner with so that we could do a, you know, a grade sharing or a, you know, teacher-share type situation? I think that opportunity would present itself. But as far as additional funding goes, I don't believe so.
There's not additional ongoing funding. There are grant opportunities for development of it. Development of the program, development of the curriculum, which is what we're teaming with DMAC with already. So not to sustain the program, but to establish the program, there are funds for that. Not many of them actually qualify. I think they gave five out the first year. I don't know that they gave out any last year. I could follow up as well and find out for you, but yeah, it's, it's very limited.
As far as the thought process behind this, I mean, do you know what, what, what is pushing this? I mean, from a statewide level, is it because they feel that there's not enough computer courses in the classroom? Or, I mean, obviously, we're gearing up for technology moving forward. But I'm just trying to understand the whole scope of it.
Yep.
And if it's because we're not keeping up with other states or what's, what's driving all this?
My, my understanding would be it's the, it's the industry that's kind of driving the need. So the need for programmers or the need for computer science, whether it's engineers or programmers, I don't know technically the difference. But there's, there's clearly a job shortage in a lot of areas, but this is one that has an extreme shortage in it. This conversation's been around for probably six or eight years as far as just getting this to the point of implementation. So I could be off on those dates, but it's now to the point that we're either, we're either going to leap or not leap and they've signed it into, into law, kind of forcing our hand.
And I think just to kind of, a little more background. I think when we, when we first started seeing a lot of computer classes, they were word processing, how to use Excel, how to use the Word document, you know, those kinds of things. And so while they were, they were good from a functional level, can students use the computer? They weren't computer science courses to understand how that's a possible career option. And so I think this is kind of a correction of that. So instead of just saying you offer a word processing class, now you're offering computer... So, instead of just saying you offer a word processing class, now you're offering computer science. So, for example, our first and second grade might learn coding, right? I mean, so it's actually how does it function? Not can I use it, but how does it actually function? How does it work together? So, I think that's kind of the correction is part of it as well, because everybody said, well, we have computer classes. Well, you had how to use a computer class is not how the computer is designed classes. So, they're trying to, I think, correct some of that.
Any other questions about that one? Okay. The second part that I have on here, and there's three or four sections here, but just a quick update about professional development at the secondary level. A week ago Friday, we had Nathan Weir come in, who was a co-author of one of the books that we provided to staff. We had gotten some feedback from our PLCs about being ready for rubric design or assessment measurement, some sort of, you know, feedback from the teachers that they were ready for that. So, we arranged for Nathan to come in. All indications or feedback from staff after he was here that it was a very well-received message. His down-to-earth approach and understanding of what grading looks like in a classroom and how it ties back to standards-based grading was well-received. And so, the timing was good with that. That's led to some additional conversation for us as far as consideration for expectations with staff when it comes to what that timeline looks like for our staff and our students, if you will. So, we continue to have those conversations as an admin team, knowing that we're meeting staff where they're at as far as this work, knowing that it's very heavy work, but we want to continue to provide them supports like Nathan as they go through that. So, we'll continue to keep you guys updated on that, but that was one of the most recent's. Our staff and student shout-out board is outside the district office, so if you happen to make your way back by Sharon's office, you can see what that looks like. We've updated that board so that it's tied back to our code of conduct. We've had a great, great response from our students and parents and staff, for that matter. I can't shortchange them, because they're the ones in the trenches with this every day. But I just think it grounds us back to what we believe in when it comes to strong morals, good ethics, saying please and thank you, all of those things. And so, I wanted that shout-out board. It was actually suggested by someone from the admin team that we connect our shout-outs to our code of conduct. So, when students receive that, we actually indicate what it was that they were doing. So, being respectful, you know, they were caught doing something good, whatever that looks like, but it's tied back to our code. It's up on the walls in our hallways now. It's in every classroom. I walked into a middle school room today, and they had the little stickers on their desk. Somebody had shrunk it down into a little version that was stuck on their desk. So, I want to give our staff a very big shout-out for their efforts in making that a focus for us this year, because I truly believe that's helped make a difference for our kids. We have good kids as a whole, generally speaking anyhow, but this, again, is just another one of those things that we can support, not just in the classroom, but we can support outside of the classroom as well. High school building goals. So, we talked last, I think Heather and Jeff talked last month about building goals, but I've listed the two high school building goals here for us to take a look at. But the first one is by the end of '21, I'm sorry, '21-'22 school year, 80% of summative assessments will be aligned to a standard identified in your curricular area. There's a notation there that if you have three or more preps, so for example, art has three or more preps, business has three or more preps, one of our science teachers has three or more preps. They're to select the three most populated courses and make those their priorities for this academic year. This is that work towards making sure that our standards that have been identified by the state are being measured within our classes by the assessments that we give. So, we chose 80% for that marker, because that's our expectation for core subjects, core curricular areas for our students. So, we thought we should represent what that 80% looks like as staff as well. We're allowing time for that work to take place in PLCs through the Understand by Design process, which is our unit design process, again, which will allow staff the time to align those goals with their assessment, or those standards with their assessments as they go through that. The goal will be continually monitored throughout the year, because clearly, this isn't a goal that we could take dipstick, well, we could take a dipstick of it right now, but it's probably at 10%, whereas in April, we're going to be closer to that 80% mark for those teachers. So, we'll continue to monitor that one. The second goal is directed, was actually, came about because of the Culture of Learning survey that we gave at the end of last year. But this one indicates by the end of the '21-'22 school year, staff will improve connections with students, as evidenced by surveying showing that 80% of students feel a connection with a teacher. I don't know if you're familiar with that Conditions of Learning data, but it indicates that there was roughly 30% of high school kids felt connected to a high school teacher. So, that's where this goal came from. Some of the focus work that's taken place at the middle school has really indicated that although that data was one snapshot in time, that they've done some surveying with our students that have indicated that that's not necessarily the case. They feel a much greater connection with students somewhere in that 80% to 90% range as of now, currently. So, that's not to say, okay, great, we've met it, we're moving on. It's just to show you that that's a snapshot in time, and we're going to continue to monitor that. So, the questions that will be surveyed of the high school kids here in probably the next week or so, the first question, do you feel welcome at I-35? Do you feel safe while at school? Is there an adult at I-35 that you feel comfortable with? Meaning that you could go to this adult with a concern, suggestion, or celebration? Same question applies, is there another student at I-35 you feel comfortable with? And then, the last one, are you happy to be at Interstate 35? So, questions very similar to the Conditions of Learning survey, but a little more specific about wanting to know whether you feel that connection with a teacher or not. That's part of our advisory time as well with high school kids and middle school kids, for that matter, but to give them an individual that's not necessarily a curricular, you know, a core curricular teacher that they could form a relationship with or find somebody to be of support if needed. So, we'll continue to monitor the progress towards those goals, and I'm sure give you that information as the year goes on. And then, as well, we've been taking this data back to our administrative teams and using a data, I'll call it data analysis protocol, which I think is, I've found it to be a very beneficial protocol, because you're getting other perspectives of what does the data mean? So, we would just take raw data back to them, and they would do some unpacking of what that is to provide feedback. So, it's been a, in my opinion, I guess, it's been a very good protocol for us to work through as a team to get multiple perspectives.
Just a quick question on the connectedness to the students and staff.
Yep.
Have we measured that in any other way in the past, at least in your experience?
Yeah.
And if so, how, I like this, but how is this different? And can the data marry up at all, so we can kind of see where it's headed?
Yeah, so I would say that Conditions of Learning survey is generally administered in the spring, so oftentimes, right at the end of the school year. Not great timing, but I've had conversations with other districts on how they administer that to provide some stability with the results that they get back. So, I plan to do that this year. But to answer your question, we've measured it through the Conditions of Learning survey, but we've not gone back to ask questions specific like this up until now, unless you're aware of anything else, Sharon, that I'm not aware of. But I do think this will give us good baseline. The one suggestion that we did get from the, that I took away from our conversation with other conference schools is that you would have one person give that Conditions of Learning survey to all students. We talked about this at the SIAC meeting, Sarah, but one person, if they're giving the survey to the same, you can take out the factor of I may be intimidated by Eddie and not by Sarah, or by Roger and not by Steve. So, we will figure out a schedule for that. So, it may even be that Jeff comes in and gives it to the high school kids, because they don't have a ton of connection to him, may know him from elementary, but don't necessarily know him. But then, he can also be there to give clarifying questions to the Culture of Learning survey.
One of the things you brought up at the SIAC meeting last week was there's no timeframe set for this. So, this could have happened to the student, and they felt this way. It could be five years ago, 10 years ago. It wasn't just this particular school year. And so, that's why, too, we wanted to have a little bit more guidance for the students to do that, so.
Is there a thought process behind the fact that, like, in high school, I was a really horrible student, probably treated my teachers pretty badly, but today, my 11th grade English teacher is probably one of the most influential people that I've had a connection with, and I just never had the opportunity to vocalize that when it mattered? Does that make sense?
May, well...
What I'm asking?
Yeah, no.
There's no way to measure that aspect of it?
No, no.
Having that connectivity wouldn't have been recognized at that time.
I don't know if that example was true or not for you, so I'm not sure how to answer this question exactly.
He was influential, but I wasn't that...
No, I think that's hard to quantify for kids, because we never know when that aha moment's going to be. I think the goal for us is that our kids feel like they have someone that they can go to here if there's, you know, a safety concern or if they have a concern with something else. The goal is that they have someone here when they walk through the door that they know, if I need something, I can go to Eddie regardless of the time it is. I can go to his room and talk to him about this. So, that would be the goal, especially for high school kids.
So, help me recognize that before you turn for it.
Yeah, yes.
No, no, I'm being facetious there a little bit, but, you know, you don't want kids leaving here.
Yeah.
Thinking that nobody cared, that nobody was...
I think that's the concern from the Culture of Learning survey. I mean, if you've got seven out of 10 kids saying that they don't feel connected to somebody here, perception would be that's not the case. However, if that's what our data tells us, we have to go with what our data tells us. So, now we're working on a way to monitor that. You know, on the flip side of that, we'll also have a, teachers go through, the middle school came up with this idea as well. They've really taken this and run with it, but they've put all students' names in a spreadsheet by grade level. Teachers are to go through and mark which students they recognize by face and could call by name. Then, they're to go through and mark who can they say, who can they talk something on a personal level with? They know Steve does this, this, and this. And then, also, what can they tell me about Steve's academic needs? Whether they're support up or support down, whatever that looks like. So, can we answer that as teachers? And does our data show that back from kids that they're feeling we're connected, and we can show that we are connected as well?
Thank you for answering my question that was not clear, but that did answer it, thank you.
Yes.
Just a couple of comments on this. I think, number one, just by increasing the awareness to it, will make the kids know that there is something out there that they could do, right? Oh, okay, that's the thing, so I can get help if I need it. And then, to Jeremy's point, I think what it does is it creates a sentiment line. So, you're not measuring, it's no, but you're going to get a score out of this, and you can measure it as the time of the year goes and as the kids and the classes change. And so, in some ways, it will be a measurement, because you're setting that baseline. And then, there was one other thing. But those are, I think this is a great idea. I really like it. We do something similar at work. The one thing, there's no open-ended at the end, right? If you wanted to put an open-ended question, and if there was a theme that was running through, if I didn't see it, I can't see that.
Yeah, I think there was...
Okay, as long as there's an open-ended.
I'm sorry, I didn't put it in my screenshot, but I'm fairly certain there is an opportunity for open-ended, if I remember from responses from the middle school students.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
So, the last thing, we started fast testing at the high school this year. Fast testing is something that we've done at the middle school and elementary for years. As we were talking about data last year and student achievement, where are we at in the, you know, the learning gap that may have existed because of COVID? We wanted to get some additional data points in there rather than waiting just until the ICASP to measure those students. So, we gave the A reading and the A math test to all high school students in grades '9 through '12. If you look at the scores that are here, and maybe Sharon will share some of these as well from the SIAC meeting, because we did look at those as well. Our ninth grade A reading scores were at 81%, 10th grade 76%, 11th grade 76%. So, when you look at that 80% marker in reading, you could look at those numbers and say, we're close-ish in that hitting 80% proficiency with our students. So, I thought for at-first blush, this showed us good data for the fall. We're going to wait, and we'll see what this looks like in the winter for us, because we'll measure three times, fall, winter, January will be that next marker, and then, April is that spring marker. And so, we'll continue to monitor this progress of students throughout the school year. Our A math scores, you'll see are not as good as our A reading scores. Again, I would say perception would tell you that we knew some of that, that there was a greater gap in math than there is in reading, just based on our Iowa Assessment scores. But what this screener does for us is it allows us to take a look at students who may be in that category of in need of assistance in both Iowa Assessment and based on this screener through FastBridge, that, okay, what supports do these students need? So, then, the next question is if we identify that Steve needs support in math, we can then do a diagnostic test to find out, okay, we need this specific support, because we've got to close the gap in computation in math, so that, you know, obviously, your achievement can be greater and can be approved, improved. We've hired two interventionists at the secondary this last year, so we have one at the middle school and one at the high school, both using this data on a regular basis to determine, A, who are those students that they're going to continue to support? And B, what is this information telling us about those kids? And how can we better understand what supports they need to kind of close that academic gap? Knowing, obviously, that the stopgap is at the element, or between the elementary and middle school. So, the goal would be that they have those skills when it comes to academic needs by the time they get to the high school, but knowing, I mean, just being completely transparent, we're never going to catch all those kids. So, the goal would be to have supports to help those kids that do not, that can't close that gap by the time they reach high school. So, I apologize for the length of my board report, but had a lot of stuff that we wanted to get to you. So, any questions?
Just to clarify, I don't remember. This is the first time we've done this.
First time, yep, first time. Now, we've given this to the middle school kids, so we do have some previous year's data that we could go back and look to compare how they are. FAST was not playing well with syncing that data from last year to this year, so that's why I just gave this year's data for us here in the fall. And we'll, as soon as we have it for the winter, we'll bring that back as well. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Mr. Castor. Mr. Tessa?
Good evening. I'm going to kind of pick up a little bit kind of where Steve left off. I'm talking with about those diagnostics and things like that. He mentioned his interventionists at the middle school and high school. If you remember the last board report that I had, I mentioned the QRI-7 diagnostic. That sounds familiar. We were going to begin that with the fourth grade class. Based on our FAST data and our ICASP scores from last year, those two other interventionists were trained as well, as were the elementary interventionists and a whole slew of our coaches, administrators. And we really just kind of hit the ground running, testing about 80% of the fourth grade class with that diagnostic, and it was good for everyone to really kind of see how that process worked, so we're all able to speak the same language. So, our interventionists use the same tools as what the middle school and the high school interventionists were all trained on. We're in the process now, I think we met just last week, to dig into that data and start to look at what kind of groups we need to create with that. You know, because now we have a whole slew of different skill deficits that we've identified using that diagnostic, and now, we're going to create those intervention groups based on that. And so, that's kind of the next step to kind of keep digging into that. As we were talking also with that diagnostic tool, another one that came up was PRESS, and that is more of a universal diagnostic that can be used in the classroom. So, we also had training with that on the last PD day in October. And it, based on the feedback I've got from the teachers, is very well-received. It's very systematic as far as, you know, here's your sheets, and you start off with, you just have a kid read this line of words, and you just kind of mark, and if they make any errors, if they hit a certain number of errors, you stop right there, because you found your deficit. And then, it says, use this tool, and it has a catalog of interventions. And if they pass that one, then you... And if they, if they pass that one, then you kind of move on to the next one. So you go from short vowel sounds to long vowel sounds to blending to digraphs to all different kinds of things. Teachers just really seem to eat that up because they left that training with something in their hands that they could use immediately that next day with students. So that, that was, went over really well. Same PD day, we also had John Butts from the AEA come in and follow up with some of the math block work that we started last spring, where we talked about research-based, what a math class should look like if you have a one-hour block of math, what four key components belong in that. And what he's doing this year is he's doing a deeper dive into each of those. So you basically have an opener, large group, small group, and a closure of some type, those four main components. He had about forty-five minutes with the staff the last PD day and did a deep dive on what those openers could look like. And, and the teachers left with a whole catalog of, of samples that they could use again that next day. The feedback from that last PD day is about the best feedback I've heard from a PD day in a while, and which is surprising because it was nonstop from the time they got here. We had breakfast from the chiropractic place, it's named after a road, what's that? EP True, yeah, there we go. Chiropractic provided us breakfast. We went into that, went into a, a culture talk. And then we went right into the math block and the press training. So it was solid, solid training, and they loved it. And, and I think the big thing was that it wasn't just someone just talking. And then they leave with good feelings. They left with stuff that they could use that next day in class. So that was really well received. A lot of good stuff going on. We got PLCs meeting twice a week. Those teachers have been working on creating their, their units and their assessments based on some of that UBD work that we've been doing for a while. A lot of the classes that have written those new standards, at least for math and reading, we have those imported into Power School and they'll start to be reflected on report cards when they come out next week at, at parent teacher conferences. We switched to trimesters at the elementary, if you remember. What's really, it's not exactly divided into one-third, two-thirds. It's just, we really lined our snapshots up with conferences. Elementary is just a different world, and we want to be able to have those meetings with parents and give them current information. So we just, the trimester ends the Friday before conference week. So even though the quarter ended today, our trimester's ending on Friday. But those new standards should be reflected in most of the grades. And looking forward to conferences next week. Along with conferences comes the book fair, so make sure to stop down, buy some books, support our elementary library. It's our hugest fundraiser of the year, and it means a lot for our library and the number of books that we can provide in there. Red Ribbon Week is this week, so we've got that going on. I had to go home and change because I didn't think I wanted to present in my pajamas because that's what I was in today. But we've got dress-up days this week, so it's always fun for the kids to see them in the pajamas. Tomorrow's Team Day, then we've got a Superhero Day, Wear Red Day, and then Friday's Costume Day. So we got Halloween coming in on that same crazy week. So we've got classroom parties and trick-or-treating, again sponsored by the high school student council this, this Friday. And it's, we started it last year and it went over great. I don't know if our office decorations can compete with the district office because for some reason they like to set that bar up in unattainable levels, but we will do our best. So we'll make sure to get some pictures. I'm sure it'll be all over Facebook. But Friday looks to be a really fun day. Also on Friday, the high school band and music are throwing together a small mini in-house concert, as they're calling it, that they're hosting for our kids, just to have a chance to showcase some of the stuff that they've been doing. So we've got that slammed in there on Friday. So between everything else on Friday, it's going to be a busy, crazy day in here. And the final thing on my note is, the play was November twelfth and thirteenth, so make sure to mark that on your calendars. We've been having practice almost every day and got a ways to go. It's less than three weeks away, but we will, we'll get there now that we've got this board meeting out of the way, get all this stuff cleared off and start to build a set, and look forward to having that here in a few weeks. So that's all I got for you. What's, you got any questions?
What is the production?
The production is a Twenty-First Century Christmas Carol. So it's a modern retelling of the classic Dickens tale. Instead of Ebenezer Scrooge, it is Eleanor Scrooge. And same, same concept, otherwise it's just a modern retelling.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tessa? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent Report.
So we have several things on the report for tonight. School Board Elections are November second, so we encourage everyone to go out and vote for those. We have three candidates this year running. I did want to do a quick look at where you can find information. So if you go to our website under School Board, there are a couple of different things. There are some frequently asked questions about the elections and things like that that are pretty, pretty general. Iowa Association of School Boards puts out frequently asked questions, and so that information is found in that election information on the right. And then we also wanted to make sure everybody knew where their polling place was. So we put together a 2021 School Board Elections. This went out as a news item, so everyone should have been able to see this. But we just have the polling locations and then links to the website. So if people have questions, they know who they can contact. So that's all posted here. We have two seats open, three candidates running, but everybody in the district can vote. So you don't have to just be somebody from that district where the candidates are running from. So everybody in the district can vote. I just wanted to clarify that so if there was any confusion. So if you have questions, your best bet about polling, polling locations is the auditors in those counties, but you can also call Ted or I and we can help with questions if you have them. So elections are November second. I wanted to give a quick update on communication. That's one of the things that has been a, a goal for the administrative team and for, for me in particular. So we do the Tri-Corner once a month. That came out for the first time in September. We did have an October version of that. I think the nice thing about that is it not only updates our activities and events that are going on, but it also showcases some of the programming that we have here. So we had the Culinary Arts Program this last time. Our coaches are going to do some work with teacher leadership and what that looks like and how cognitive coaching impacts the classroom or how student-centered coaching impacts the classroom. So the public understands kind of what that program is. So that's one of the things that we've done. We started a Did You Know?, which is a, a quick email that we sent to staff based on questions that are coming to us that we think would probably be beneficial for everyone to have access to. So the first questions were about the COVID sick leave pay that we had last year that was mandated or, or one of the responses by the federal government that came around in December. If you remember correctly, it ran out towards the end of March, but we as a district decided to continue through the end of the school year for anybody who was, who was gone with COVID. And that we are not doing this year. So we just sent out an article or some information about the history of that and what it was and, and what it was used for and why we didn't move forward with it. Our next one is on teacher quality money, which has been around forever. But there are funds available for teachers to take some continuing ed classes, to get resources for their classrooms. So we just want to make sure that they remember that it's there, that it's accessible. So topics that come up to HR or to myself that we think are, are things that, you know, they're just good reminders, things that we don't talk about often, but it's good for teachers to know. And I know that we talked a little bit about, Steve mentioned, we have surveyed our staff. We, we are asking our teachers to, to kind of rethink how they're meeting this year. And so we wanted to make sure we weren't taxing the teachers too much. And so we're giving them some options based on their feedback. Same goals, same expectations, because those things are, I think the building leadership team understands and wants those things to be met. But how teachers do that, they have a, a lot more control on what that looks like. So we were excited about the feedback. I think that they were pleased that, you know, they had some concerns. They, they brought them to us and we gathered some data and then made some changes or, or allowing them to make the changes of the need to, to get that done. So that was kind of an update on the communication. The wage group work, this kind of stemmed from not only our conversation at the board table. I think Roger kind of alluded to when we talked about our job shortage at our last meeting. We're seeing that continuously, and, and we really do have to think about our wages, how we're competitive. And so this group is, is a newly formed group, more like a task force, I would say. They're going to make recommendations. We do have representatives from both unions on it so that we can make sure that we're not stepping on anybody's toes. But we, we understand that we've got to be cognizant of our people and what they do and, and the value that they bring to the school. And, and to keep things safe. Whenever we have to shift things and we have eight or 10 or 12 people in the building that are different, it just, it just disrupts enough that, that it's noticeable. And so we want to, we want to try and prevent some of that, but knowing that there is a lot going on and a lot of people are short workers. So that wage group is tasked with, how do we, how do we become or get to be competitive? And, and it used to be, we used to look at other districts. You know, so we would look at other districts in our, in our conference and say, are we competitive with our wages? And we really are. When you look at our, our wages and our benefits, the problem is when you compare us to the private sector now, we're not. And so that becomes one of the challenges that we have to, have to work through. The other thing that we talked about were, how do we get some of the district needs met? So things like longevity, how do we maybe incentivize for some of that? How do we incentivize for people who are getting additional education opportunities to offer more options for our kids? Being a small district, we know, kind of like what we talked about with computer science, the more diverse our teachers are able to be, the more offerings we can, we can give to kids. And so how are we going to recognize that? And we, we have to understand that this process lasts years, right? We've negotiated what we have currently in the contract over thirty years. And so now trying to, to navigate that is going to take a little bit of time. So I'm hoping that that group comes up with a timeline and some clear objectives and we can, we can bring some of that to you guys. The next one is a question that we had from the public last board meeting about the property tax increase. So I just want to show a quick, a quick slide and then let everybody know that we are going to meet in November and have a more in-depth look at school finance and property taxes and questions that, that the public may have. So we encourage people to bring those questions to us. But I wanted to just go over and, again, very, very quick answer, but like I said, we're going to, we're going to host tonight where we'll have community come in if they want to know more about this and, and send us the very specific questions they have. So I think the question stemmed for, when you look at the valuation of the taxes or how much the school is generating, there's an increase this, this year of $224,000 plus $254. So where does that come from or how is that determined? Well, this first line is, is obviously key. It's $197,000 of it. That actually is dictated by the state formula. The district has no control over that. That includes things like our budget guarantee. So if we're down students, so if we, if we have a decrease in enrollment, in order to let the district make changes over the course of the year, they guarantee that you will have 101% of whatever your budget was the previous year. Well, the difference between the new money that comes from the state and that dollar amount becomes our budget guarantee. So if we don't get a lot in state aid or an increase in, in cost per pupil or support per pupil, then that number is larger. And so our, our budget guarantee, which is all property tax, is larger. So last year, our budget guarantee was $168,000. So of that, 197, 168 was because we had a decrease in enrollment and we didn't have enough increase in money from the state to cover that. So that number at the top is set in the formula. We have, we have no control over that number. The other ones here are the other levies that we have, the other funds that we have. So these general fund levies, the management levy, the total PEPAL money, all of these things, as you can see, some of them had an increase, some of them had a slight decrease. So our total was $224,000 of an increase. The, we're always going to see an increase in this because this is where kind of the cost of doing business is calculated in. So as you look at having, you know, inflation, things like that, this is, yeah, new facilities, all of those things, this is where that number is calculated in. Several of these, we don't, we don't have any control over. They come to us from the state and they get populated in. Some of them we do. As far as, you know, debt service, we can control that based as a board on what we want to do with that fund and our levy. But as you see, that one went down. So it's, I know this is a very high glance look at it, but this is, this is where that money goes into the different funds. And it fluctuates according to some of those factors that we don't, we don't control. So I will, like I said, I will give a, a much more in-depth understanding and go through what these different categories are when we do that night dedicated to this, to this information. But I did want to respond because we did have a question at our last meeting, so I wanted to at least get it out there. So if people do have questions, they can contact us with their very specific questions or if there's something that they don't understand or if there's something they want more information on. And then we can make sure that's included in that information. So, and that, I think, is on the board agenda. I have it on there. At the very bottom, we meet on November eighth, which is a Monday night back here for that, for that meeting. So anybody that has questions on that, please let me know, but I wanted to at least put that up there. And if that's not, if that doesn't answer the question that was asked last week, I just ask that you contact the district office and we can maybe more specifically address the question.
Then Sharon, can we, after that November eighth meeting, can we recap that at the next board meeting?
You bet.
Not necessarily hand the depth that that meeting will get, but.
Yeah, and we'll put, we'll put that online. We'll record it. So if you want to watch parts of it or all of it, I don't know. I don't know, but yeah, I, we'll, we'll post that online. We'll record it too, so, but yes, we can. Foundation update, if you remember, this is one of the things that I, I, I guess I have a passion for. Kind of where do we get maybe some additional funds to allow opportunities for our kids? So I think I brought this to you guys maybe three years ago, the idea of creating a foundation or seeing if it would be well-received, and we had a, a great interest in it. So we didn't do anything last year. We had planned to do a, a kind of a kickoff in the spring. And then that got nixed, so we held off. We met for the first time again in October. We had two meetings. They're looking at a fundraiser for after Chris, or after Thanksgiving. And there'll be more information coming out on that. They're talking about how are they marketing and really explaining what it is? So if you have, if you have a, you want to donate to a 501(c)(3), we have that status. We applied for the federal government status. So if you work for a corporation that matches gifts and, and so how does that all work? So we want to get that information out to people. They have three primary focuses, scholarships for students, activities with teachers, and then designated projects. And so I think they're going to introduce the first project with this kickoff after Thanksgiving. So it's, it's pretty exciting, but we'll get more information out about that. And they have a tentative kickoff again, celebration of I-35 and community scheduled for the spring. So hopefully what they were going to try and do in the spring of nineteen, they can do this spring, so. And then PSYAC update, this, that, if you don't remember, that's the School Improvement Advisory Committee. This is one of the committees that is asked or is sanctioned by the board. So we do have board representation on that committee. And it's a group of parents, school personnel, and a board member that meet and really kind of focus on some of those core things that we do while we're here, testing, goals, curriculum. We meet three or four times a year depending on what the workload is. We had our meeting in October. Our focus at that meeting was looking at our assessment data from ICASP, looking at the Condition of Learning Survey, which Mr. Castor talked about in detail during his report. And we also talked about course enrollment data, which kids are signing up for which classes, mainly on gender. So were we having a lot of females sign up for, you know, culinary arts and a lot of males? males signing up for welding? And we saw some interesting things, I think, out of that. We had, if I remember right, almost all of our culinary students were male and our welding, we had two female and then the rest, I think there's 11 or 12 males in there. So kind of a trend that we're seeing in business in that culinary program, but we're also now seeing that in school as well. So kind of an interesting look at the data. So I will be sending out the minutes for that. I'll post those online as well on the same site that has our board meeting packet information. So the last thing, well, two last things. We had our bus drivers this last week and I, they do such a great job. And so we, I went into the band. Mr. Payne is probably thinking, I'm a pain, but I had an idea driving home on Tuesday night. I was like, you know, we do this marathon of road runners at the elementary and the kids love it, and then we do the walks through the halls with our athletes who do such a great job. And I thought, you know, maybe we should honor our staff that way too because our kids love their bus drivers, for the most part. But, so, we, I went to the band and they were in practice and I said, I'm just going to ask a favor. You can tell me no. They were so, the kids, the band kids were so excited to showcase what they do. They were talking, before I even left the room, we're talking about what music they were going to play and what they were going to do at the different stops where they stop and perform. So bus drivers loved it. We took lunch out to them on Friday afternoon and it was really just a great day to celebrate them and all they do for our district. So I did see where one of the districts kind of, I think, is Mr. Boyce was talking. We have a lot of things going on nationally, and I saw in one district where they were, they didn't have enough bus drivers, so they had to pay their parents to come, you know, to bring their kids to school. So we're just so thankful that we've got the core group of bus drivers that we do, so. And then I did talk with Mr. Gibson before. There was a question about our packet of information. So when we put things up like the property tax information, so the things that are in here that we're going to refer to, let me see if I can get there. All of these documents that we'll use to talk about enrollment and the things we'll use to talk about the air conditioning project, where our agenda is. There was a question about can we get access to public? And we'll work through what that looks like. I don't know quite yet. And I'm not, mainly because, and I can go into a lot more detail, but there are some things that are confidential until the board takes action, and there are some things that are not, right? So how do we separate that? And so we'll kind of work through that. If you guys have ideas, I'd love to hear about them, but we'll get the access as soon as we can and make sure we communicate that out to everybody.
So I do have a question about that. And this is, I think this goes back to even when Eddie and I first started on the board, was how, because the packets can be varying of sizes, it can be varying documents, and a lot of times there is confidential information in there, whether it be about students or staff members or whatever. But how does one separate that out? Because what we're going to get will not be the same as what you can provide anybody else. And so is there ways to do that that protects you, protects the board, protects the public? Because if they get the information, then, you know, that, without, because there is stuff that they, that we can't give until it's done.
Right. Yes, and I think so. I think there are companies now that have that option, that make publishing the board agenda easier, and then as soon as action is taken, it's moved, you know, so it's not confidential anymore it becomes. But if it's personnel thing, it stays confidential. So I think you can mark those. Let me dig into it a little bit and see what options there are, because I think that the question is how do we keep people informed? And if we're going to put something on the agenda and we're going to use, let's say, the document on, I'll just pull one up here. This is early retirement, I think, not that you can see it yet. But if we look at early retirement here, if we're going to have a conversation on this, I think if we're sending this out to the public on Friday or Sunday, you know, before the board meeting, then it'd be good for them to have access to this as well. So how are we going to do that and still keep the things confidential that we need to? So we're working on that, and as I said, we'll communicate that as soon as we've got a solution to that. Otherwise, we'll figure out something internally that can get us what we need to, so.
The other aspect of that conversation, and since you mentioned Mr. Gibson was the one that brought it up, he brought to us last month the idea of our public forum being placed somewhere else in the agenda. And, you know, I've actually stood on that quite a bit, wondering what that would look like or how that could even be done. But I keep going back to the idea that a school board meeting is a meeting that's done open and in the public, but it's a school board meeting of the board of directors. And so when we're talking about the comments section, providing that extra information, or having a service that could help us provide that, would probably better serve the public if the comments section is right where it's at, because they could address those things before we act on them. And that, I think that would probably address the concern that was brought up. Does that make sense to everybody? So if you could look into what we can do to better do that, that would be great.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, because if we put it later in the agenda, later in the agenda, could be the public commenting on stuff after we've already taken action on something, which, you know, the purpose of the agenda is to put out there to the public, here's what we are going to be talking about, so that they can comment on what we are going to be talking about before we take action on it. Because we want to hear their ideas on what's on our agenda. And the concern was not enough information, because the agendas are posted. They're posted at the post office, the banks, Montross, they're on the website. So what we're going to be talking about is there, it's just I think the detail is what is what the concern was about, so.
I think that's kind of the key, is that when we do that, it'll be an electronic version. And so as long as we communicate with the public, because I don't know that it's feasible to print packets and put them at the bank or put them in the post office or, you know, I mean, so I think we have to understand that if that's going to be the avenue that we go, it's going to probably be electronic, but everybody can have access to it and we can put it on the website or wherever.
Well, we've moved away from paper packets, period, so.
Yeah, so just so we understand that that's one of the caveats of that, but that's all I have. I know it was a lot again, but a lot of good stuff going on.
If I could just go back to the communication, I was just curious, could we leverage the content that you provided to the Tri-Corner and put it in the Madisonian or think about putting it in the Madisonian? And just to spread our net a little wider, because, I mean, I read the Madisonian.
I don't know the Madisonian, I mean, we submit things to the Madisonian, they don't always publish them.
Okay, got it. Well, maybe that's, maybe it's not interesting enough. No, I know, because we publish our board meetings in the Madisonian. I know people that said, oh, I saw the meeting minutes, and the meeting minutes are so, you know, dry.
Yeah.
But, and, right.
And we're required to.
Yeah, no, I know, but it's just, it's a different read than, these are the other things we're doing at the school.
Yep, I can definitely check into that.
And then I don't know if it's on the app or anything like that or even, you know, I mean, you take the time to write it, it's worth magnifying it, I think.
Sure.
To whoever wants to listen, so.
And I would think we can work with the Tri-Corner to just maybe put their publication on our site somewhere.
A link.
You know, a link, because there's a lot about the communities. I know that St. Charles, I think, puts stuff in there and just things happening in the community even, which we get lots of questions about, so that might help with what they do too, since I think we have the same purpose. Okay, let me check into that.
One thing to consider when we, if we're able to put information out in advance, just make sure it's read only, as opposed to raw form of Word or Excel, just for the purpose of protecting the document.
PDFs and things, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I would argue that in the Madisonian, they have the little superintendent's report every week, right? And I, do they have to pay for that or is it just they choose to publish winter sets and not ours? I'm curious. I don't know the algorithm that drives publishing in a newspaper.
Can I just say, I don't know the answer?
Yep, yes, please, no, yeah, just stop there.
I will find out.
Yep, oh, okay.
I will find out.
Any other questions for Mrs. Detlinger? I take it that was it?
That's all.
That was a lot.
I mean, I have more I can talk about.
Nope.
That's for now, yes.
We appreciate it. All right, so that moves us to the consent items. Here we'll take a moment to discuss and/or approve the consent items. Everybody should have gotten the past meeting minutes.
Can I make a clarification on that before? Because I usually don't put a pending on there.
Yes.
So Mary Strickler hired as an associate. She will be on a two-to-three day contract, and that's, this will be the first one we try with that. She might possibly be subbing in some of our classrooms as well. So that, we've worked out today, but it'll be, I just wanted to clarify so that you would know that it does look a little different than a full-time contract. It's a two or three day, she's going to start at two days, might go to three, but she might also spend those three days subbing for positions as well, so, not full-time.
Okay. So we've got the past meeting minutes, the monthly bills and financial statement, which we all regretted with the remainder of when we got here. And hires and resignations are as follows. Oliver Sinclair hired as a special education teacher. Jenny Smith hired as a daycare associate. Sarah McDonald hired as an associate. And Mary Strickler hired as an associate. These do require a motion and a second before we can vote. I move to approve the consent items.
And I'll second that.
So I'm properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent items. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Got it. Items for discussion, early retirement discussion.
So every year I bring this around October. Timeline is typically, we'd like to have the board vote on this by the December meeting so that we can get information out if you are going to offer it for anybody that qualifies. I did put the qualifications that we've used in the past. As a board, you can determine any of those factors that you want to, except for the 55. They do have to be older than 55. Years of eligibility or years of experience is something that you have control over. So you can move the number or the age beyond 55. You can't move it any less than 55, but you can have the eligibility for years, any that you choose them to be. But we've always offered, or I shouldn't say we have always, the last three years we've offered a one-time HSA payment of $30,000 the July after. If you remember, there were several years where we had done kind of a, lack of a better word, a hodgepodge of agreements with people, and so we never knew, or the strain on the management fund over the course of time was a little taxing. We still have some of those that we're paying out from over four years ago, and so we went to kind of a one-time payment so that we could clean that up a little bit. But again, as a unit, you guys can decide first if you want to offer early retirement, second, if you want to change any conditions around that, we can get that ready for the next board meeting. But we ask that you do this typically by December, so we can get people talking to their financial advisors or whomever they need to talk to, Ipers, and then we can get in on that early hiring pool if we have people that do want to, we usually take it to, bring them to you in January, so we can start looking in February or March for positions, so.
So I actually have a question here. When you say early hiring pool, it's been difficult finding people this year.
Yes.
And so if we were to follow what we've done in the past, would we be setting ourselves up for potential issues coming next year?
I would say potentially.
In terms of staffing, yeah.
Yeah, I would say potentially. We're just, I mean, if you look, we're hiring a special ed teacher and it's October. You know, I mean, now that was granted, that was a kind of a challenge for lots of factors, but we had, and I think Mr. Weber left, but we had one applicant for that, and that's who we're hiring. I mean, I think he's a good applicant, but we had one applicant for that position. That is a concern of mine, especially right now. I will tell you, what does hiring look like? If all seven people took this, I think we'd have a, I think we'd have a challenge, at least the conditions that we currently have. And so the document that corresponds with that is the one that I just had up there. These are the people that are currently eligible, but if you look, 63 years of experience is, I'm sorry, not 63 years of experience, age. Our 63-year-old is the lowest in seniority on this list, and then we've got a couple of 55s and 56s. That's, those are challenging, so.
Well, if I remember right, in past years, we did cap it as far as the first X number of people that agree to it, get it, and the other ones don't, right? Like, I don't remember what that number was. I think it was like a six or a seven number.
Correct. Well, to begin with, it wasn't the first year, because we didn't have as much in our management fund, because we were still backfilling some of the other agreements that had been reached prior to that. And then we went based on what our management fund dictated. I would say right now, it's not really what our management fund dictates, it's what we can support for hiring. That would be my consideration. I think we've, I think we put ourselves in a good spot with the management fund that we can, we can do what we need to, but, I mean, the other thing to consider is, you know, do you offer it every year? Or do you let it build and offer more incentive if you want, you know what I mean? Or do you protect the pool that you have, knowing that it's going to be hard to fill six or seven spots if all of them take the retirement option, so.
There's no mechanism that you could put a contingency upon, you know, a higher, you know, finding out a higher that's acceptable. I mean, there's no way, right?
I don't think you can do that with early retirement.
Yeah, right. It's not like selling your house.
Yeah, you can retire, wait, no, you can't. I don't, I don't think so.
We're going to pull that back.
I can check, but I'm almost 100% positive.
Yeah, I figured there wasn't, but.
Yeah.
So management fund-wise, you feel, we feel we're in a good shape, is what I heard.
Let me pull that up, because I think I had Ted give me that. No, I didn't.
We should end the year at about $500,000.
Is it on that? Did you say that online?
We looked at it this afternoon again, and we should end the year at about $500,000 in the management fund.
But that has our insurance coming out of it and some of those other things that can, only come out of management, so.
So it'd be nice, Ted, to understand really what, after the other stuff's out of there, what's really left.
Yeah, and let me see, I think I have it.
That's what it is.
That's right there. We did talk about it right before we came, so I do have it.
I think that's our estimated balance at the end of the year.
Yeah, estimated balance right now, after we have about $170,000 out for insurance, we have 30 out for the agreements that we've made with people still passed. We're catching up on those since before even I began here. Unemployment claims come out of that, that's included in there. And then our early retirements that we've had last year and factoring in if we have any this year, is that right?
Well, we paid out $120,000 in July, and so that's in there.
That's in there.
We don't have anything for next year.
Right.
Except for like, is it 30,000?
Yeah.
But that's, that would come out in the next year, so it doesn't matter.
So about $500,000 with all of that deducted.
To help with some of the early hiring pool, do we have any student teachers that are going to be here in the spring semester? I don't know how early, I don't remember how early that all happens. Would there be any way to make connections with the Simpson or with some of the other Graceland or something like that to get more? Graceland, or something like that, to get more here so that people maybe would want to be here too? I don't know.
We do have three, I think, in the building right now, three or four. Yeah, yeah. And we did hire one student teacher from last year.
And do you have to wait to hire that person until?
Yes and no, that's what our challenge was. They are not certified yet when they, because they test typically in the spring for, in Iowa, it's called the Praxis Test, so they might not get certified. And so that's a challenge that you run into. Do you hire somebody that doesn't have the endorsement yet that's completed all the work? And so you kind of take a gamble on that.
Can you write them an offer contingent on that? I know.
Well, they can't teach if they don't have the endorsement.
Right. But that's something that I do quite often. With interns, we will offer them contingent on their degree a year before they graduate.
Yeah, and I think we have to.
To try to get our hooks.
Yeah, and I think we have to put in a deadline for when we're going to say that they have to have that met by. Because that's one of the challenges we run into, is if they don't have it in July, well, that's still really late to hire, so.
Okay.
So let me pull back up the... So I guess I would ask that if you have things that you want us to run, if you decide you do want to use, do give early retirement this year, what do you want the parameters to be? Do you want anything to be changed? Do you want the dollar amount to be changed? Do you want the age to be changed? Or the years of service changed? Or if you don't offer it, then I just need to know that you're not going to offer it. But if you want us to run any other scenarios, let me know and... We can get it for you for the November meeting.
What is the cost of a new teacher, right? Because that was one, always one of the benefits is the financial benefit, and the payback's usually pretty short. But with inflation pushing things up, is it still beneficial from a financial standpoint?
Well, so if you just look at the salary for active employees, only that category way over here.
Yep.
We are at about $38,000 for our new teachers.
New teachers.
Now, we also, in addition to that, is insurance, Ipers, so the actual cost. But that's the same whether they're newer, veteran.
And when you say newer, you mean non-experienced, somebody that comes in with zero experience?
Correct.
Okay.
That's if we hire a brand-new. Now, if we hire somebody that comes in with 10 years of experience, they might be making the same amount as somebody that's retiring.
Yep, right. Okay.
Yeah, I think we should probably look at just the years of experience and age and see if there's something we want to adjust to try to maintain some of our experienced teachers, but not penalize them for the longevity. Because I think that's one of the big core reasons we have this, is to reward longevity within our district too. And I don't want to penalize anybody for that. So, I'm not proposing anything, I'm just opening some discussion to think through, so.
And do you see that $38,000 as far as the starting salary for a non-experienced individual coming in, do you see that as having to be adjusted to the marketplace right now?
Oh, most definitely in the next four or five. I mean, if you think, when I first started, one of the big, one of the big questions, I know when I was interviewing, I assume when all the superintendent candidates we're interviewing, was how are we going to keep teachers here? And I kind of went with the prerogative that we are so close to the metro that we have a large majority of our staff that live somewhere else and teach here. Right or wrong, that's the condition we have. If we're looking at compensation, that's one of the things I want that wage group to really think about, is how do we honor the people who commit to I-35? Whether they live here or not. We have people that have lurked here for 15 years and commute, and love the school, love the environment. How do we, how do we reward, incentivize that so that we can have that longevity? But you look, some of our conferencing districts that are not very far away, their base salary is $50,000. So if you're living in West Des Moines and you can drive 20 minutes one way, or 20 minutes another way, and it's a difference of $13,000 with comparable benefits, that's going to be a part of the conversation. I mean, it has to be.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we'll see, our base salary has to probably change. And, you know, how we, how we structure our money and what we do with it, really, we're going to have to think outside the box to some extent, but also honor the things that we value here. If we've got teachers that are committed to getting more education and bringing more opportunities for us at our size, I think that should be something that we honor. I think that should be something that we recognize and compensate, so. But that's not how it's always been. It's always been a salary schedule, it's always been. You've been here, you've done it in another year, you move. And how do we, how do we shift that a little bit, based on the current culture, based on what our needs are as a district? So yes, to answer your question, I think so, very much.
Right. I mean, that's the same discussion throughout all the industries. I mean, your current employees are the assets of any organization, and you want to make sure that you keep that core there. But how do you keep them happy? But yet, having to bring in new people because of the employment shortage, and then attract them with a salary that is enough for them to even consider coming here versus going there.
Correct.
It's tough, yeah.
So can I just ask that if you have scenarios that you would like me to run, that you send those to me, and if we get two or three, then I'll get those out to you guys all well before the November meeting, and then we can, you can have a discussion about those options?
I would say that's fair.
Yes.
All right. Is there any other discussion on early retirement at this moment? Not hearing any, let's move on to enrollment data.
Yeah, some great news. We certify enrollment every October. Still pretty small. If we can, it's about as big as I think I can get, and get it all on one screen. And I, this looks at kind of past, as well as the last couple of years. The number that we typically pay attention to is where it says served enrollment or line 11. We have certified enrollment line 7. That's kind of a comprehensive number, our actual enrollment. But then we have different places kids go. So that 843 isn't necessarily who we serve in the building. So that served enrollment line 11, I like to pay probably more attention to because that's the kids in our building, that's who, when we look at class size, that's what's going to impact it. It's not the actual enrollment, it's that served enrollment. So if you look at this, our certified enrollment is up from 812 students to 843. You may wonder why there's a .34 or a .09. It's not because some kids come in, you know, on a day and aren't all there. It's because when we offer courses, when we offer dual enrollment, that's all at a different weighting formula. So when you put all that together, it comes in, and this is where we get our actual numbers from. So the encouraging thing, resident public students attending our district, that means people who actually live in our district and are attending our district, that number has increased by 20 students. So we've seen an actual growth in the number of students that are in the district. The number of resident public students attending another Iowa Public School District, so that could be anybody that's maybe taking online courses, that could be anybody that's going to another school district, you know, an open enroll out for lots of reasons. That would be in that number. That number did increase to 11.9. We did talk, we would see that because we had a few kids open enroll out for the virtual option that we did not offer, so we knew that that number would increase. If you look at the actual enrollments, so if you look at the formula, we had 812 as our actual enrollment last year, and we're at 843, so an increase of 31.25. We had an increase of three students that are not residents, so we had an increase of three more open enroll kids in to our district. We have 44 students currently in our daycare program. It's a half-day program, so they count as a half of a weight. So that's why you double that 22, because that's a full FTE. So last year we had 36, this year we have 44. And then, so the total number of school-aged children that we have is 815. So we're at an increase of 22.35 students that actually are in our district, that we will serve in our district. So when you look at the trends over the last couple of years, we were serving 792 last year, and then 799, or I'm sorry, 792 the year before. So we didn't have a huge increase, 799, 798. So it wasn't until back in 2016 that we had an enrollment higher. So that's all good news for our students in our school, so. Any questions about that?
Is it, is it, like, when you break it down by classes, is it due to the daycare? I would imagine a lot of that first line is.
I, Mr. Tessa might have more specific information on that. I would say that's a piece of it. I would argue that it is a piece of it because parents can bring their kids, starting in that three-year-old, our three-year-old preschool is full. It has been for the last two years, since it started, it's been at capacity. So I did have the daycare director email me and ask me when we're going to get that new building so that we can do birth to five. And I said, well, it's in the long-range plan. Hopefully with facilities, we can have those conversations in the next couple of years. But I think we've seen a huge increase in our preschool, school-aged kids that are taking advantage of that program. Mr. Tessa, do you have more information on that?
Yeah, I would say the main thing that we have is the fact that, you know, as you said, our three-year-old preschool is full. We effectively have four sections of preschool this year, when you take the fact that three-year-olds are a separate section, and we have three sections of four-year-old, and some mixed three-year-old in there if they're serving in a special environment. But, you know, considering, not that long ago, we were down to two-section, I think our theory has been for some time, if we can get them early, we can keep them. That was the, part of the reason behind the push to strengthen that before and after-school care and the daycare program, so that we can attract those families with the younger kids. And the goal is not just, you know, not just to get them for the year or two they're in preschool, but to keep them for the 13 years after. So it seems to be working in that direction. You know, I have four sections of kindergarten as well. So, I mean, that, we're seeing that number increase. If we can keep that marching up the hill, our next big problem will be where I put four sections of every grade level, so.
Any other questions about the enrollment? That's more just an FYI. I do think it's important that we have this information for public as well, because, you know, I was talking to my husband, who's in the private sector, and he was talking about a competitor that, you know, $19 starting salary. And he said, when are you guys going to, when are you guys going to move to that? And I said, our budget is determined by the number of kids we have in the building, which is a lot different than, and we can't charge the state any more money, we can't charge our taxpayers any more money, nor do we want to, but we can only, we only have a finite number for budget, right? And so when we look at this, when those numbers go up, as long as we're not pushing, you know, class sizes of 28, 29 to sustain some of this, I think that these are good things. Because we do have some classes that have, you know, 17 or 18 students in a section, so if we can get those to 2021, that's a win, so we can support a few more programs possibly, or look at that compensation package. All of those things are kind of impacted by this number right here, so.
Are there any other questions on the enrollment data? Not hearing any, we'll move on to the engineer for air conditioning work.
So we talked a couple meetings ago about the ESR funds being allocated for air circulation and air conditioning. We've really kind of made an effort to put this kind of at the top of the list from our facilities conversations. This is one of the things that came from that group that I think parents had asked about. So in order for us to use ESR funds for that, we do need to go through the process, it's federal money. We do need to go through the process of using engineers. Because we had already started some of that work, we had written the grant that allowed us to do a section of the building, and we had allocated some additional funds to kind of move that project along. So our elementary is done. Now we're looking at the middle school and the high school. And so let me pull up the documents so I can show you. I just locked out of the, out of the folder. It's a little bigger. So you've seen this before, this is the map of our building. So we're looking at what will it take to get our middle school and our high school in line with what we're doing in our elementary. The challenge we have is our high school wing, some of the heating units need to be replaced as well, so the engineer is working on what that looks like, so that we're not adding projects on projects on projects. If we're going in to look at air circulation, heating and cooling, we want to have the conversation from those units. Now, if I understand correctly, and Mr. Gray can come and have the conversation with you as well, as I understand it, some of those are original to when the building was built. And so it's just one of those things that is, with time, we're going to have to upgrade. So while we had talked about doing air conditioning, we're now talking about air conditioning the middle school wing, and air conditioning and working through the rest of the heating challenges at the high school. So while, when we first talked, we talked air conditioning, the scope of it has to include the heating because of, it makes more sense. And so the engineer is looking at that. The other thing, if you look at where this arrow is, right here, we have a nice, large chiller that I think the district spent $800,000 on about three years ago, that currently cools the gym, and the middle school, the front office is here, the library, and a couple of the rooms along here, but it's not at capacity. So I had asked them to give me an idea of what it would take to run ductwork to use our already existing unit in this area here. So what would that look like too? So I asked for two different requests. So some of that middle school section might not include the units as we've designed them in the elementary, they might be on the same as what's already in our office and in our library. So there are probably two different looks at that.
So the solution you're looking for, for the middle school and the high school, most, well, the elementary school, most of the stuff was put in as mini-split, as mini-split units, right?
Correct.
Individual mini-split units. What you're looking at for the middle school, you're hoping to be a more comprehensive, not individual units per classroom?
The middle school, whatever we, whatever we don't put on that chiller, unless, you know, it'll probably still be the mini-splits.
Still be a mini-split.
The high school might not be. Because that's got to have, the middle school doesn't need the heating work done, because that's a newer addition. It's the high school, the original classrooms that need to have the elements replaced, and I can't talk the technical terms, but...
Right, okay.
That's why Mr. Gray can be here, but I know enough to be dangerous with this slide.
So if we, if you're able to get all of this into a bid package, get it going for next year, what, can you give us a summary of what areas are remaining to be addressed within the school?
If these two are done, the high school gym.
So everything else will be, is already done besides those two areas?
Well, yeah, I don't, yes, that's, so this is, it says future air conditioning. And so this has, I do know, that it does have the pneumatic controls, which we've tried to eliminate throughout the building. We've moved... We, we've moved all of our other units off the pneumatic controls, so that we would do at the gym too. So that would, again, be probably a little
Right.
More.
And if I remember right from talking to Rick, the main issue with the high school gym is there's really, it, well, one, it's the biggest space. But secondly, is that unit was not installed in a way to accommodate a cooling unit to be attached to it? So there's even more work to be done to be able to cool that high school space, so.
Correct. So, yes.
Be nice to get all that behind us.
That would be wonderful. So that's more of a, an FYI. Um, we have met with the engineering group, and I, I, I think we were supposed to get something this week from them. So I will forward that on as, as we get it, and then put it on the next board agenda, so.
Okay. And then if, if Mr. Gray can come and talk with us.
Well, it wasn't clear.
That would be amazing.
You bet.
He hasn't, he hasn't come to see us for a while, so.
I can have him come to an update, you bet.
Perfect. All right. Is there any other questions on that? Early graduation.
Uh, we have no early graduates this year.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our, uh, agenda. Our next meeting will be the informational meeting on school finance and property tax issues, Monday, November eighth, at six P.M. in the auditorium here. And then the regular board meeting will be Monday, November twenty-second, um, at six P.M. There's no other conversation or comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So I'm properly moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.